This meeting of the Independent School District, 535 School Boards called to order at 5:42 PM Tuesday, June the 4th, 2019 in room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting, ex-official member of the Board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Amundson?
Here.
Chair Barlow?
Here.
Ms. Marvin?
Here.
Ms. Nathan?
Here.
Mr. Slusner?
Here.
Ms. Seelinga?
Here.
Ms. Workman?
Here.
As you're able, let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Munoz.
Yes, there are two changes to the agenda. Item 702, Approval of District Lead-in-the-Water Management Plan, and item 703, Approval of the 2019 Districtwide Radon Testing and Results have been changed to an information item. They do not require Board approval, so just kind of giving you an update on the results.
Move approval. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Announcements and communication. 3.01, Recognitions. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time I'll call up our, I guess we'll go one at a time, high school principals to introduce their National Merit Scholarship finalists. So we'll start with Century High School. Chris Fogarty, Principal at Century High School.
Good evening, members of the Board. Superintendent Munoz, Ms. Edgar, come on up here, students.
Face this way, guys.
Face the board.
So we are delighted here to have the opportunity to celebrate our students and their achievement academically, and not only are these students well-versed in the areas of academic study, but also leadership, character, and service that they've provided for Century High School and the Rochester Public Schools over the years. Now, this has been a great story, having Nathan come to us on the end there. Want to wave, Nathan? Nathan Shaz came to us from California this past year, and as a senior, it's been a joy having him at Century High School because whatever school you went to in California prepped you well, along with your parents. So thank you very much for joining our community this last year. Jared Nathan, I've had an opportunity to get to know for many, many years as his older brother Gregory Nathan was also a student at Century High School, and also Anjali and her leadership and work that she has committed herself to also at Century High School. So these three are able to join us. Along with them, we have six other students that I'd also like to recognize. Brooks Boy, Helen Jin Lee, Michelle Mai, Grace Odell, Brianna Shen, and Tracy Zhang. And along with these three are our nine National Merit finalists at Century High School for the year 2019. Congratulations.
Do you have the parents stand up?
Oh, if parents are here, please stand up and take a round of applause.
Next up, Eric Johnson, John Marshall High School Principal.
Good evening, members of the Board. I am very excited and happy and honored to present Luke Steinkritzer, who is John Marshall's National Merit Honorary this year. And I only got one year to get to know Luke because I was only at John Marshall for one year, but it was an honor to work with him, and I enjoy talking with him pretty often, and I thank him for his leadership, and we look forward to great things. Luke, congratulations.
All right, Tom Olson, Principal at Mayo High School.
Thank you very much for helping us honor all of our students. We have 10 students that we're recognizing tonight who have showed up. I also want to add that this year at Mayo High School, we had 46 4.0 seniors that graduated. Usually we're at about the 20s, so it's off the charts. But tonight, we have our National Merit students are Isabella Dunbar, Alice Gang, Ardas Kanwar, Sandhya Kumar, Claire McKellen-Cassavy, Ingrid Wilder, Catherine Williamson, William Yang, and Marcus Yao. I have to also add that this is a group of seniors, not just did a lot for academically our school, but our school's culture changed over the last four years as the result of the leadership of everyone that was part of this too, and it's quite a place to be. So thank you very much for everything we do, and we're looking forward to seeing what's coming up in the future for all of you. Parents that are here to support the students, please stand up, and family. We also have a sister who came back from Vanderbilt too, but she wouldn't stand up.
3.02, Above and Beyond Information.
All right, good evening. This is the April and May Above and Beyond Recognition, and as usual, I'll read a couple examples for you. The first one was Mike Olson, teacher at Fallaway Elementary. Mr. Olson has been very professional and supportive part of my daughter, supportive part of my daughter Haley, and family throughout this school year. We get engulfed within our plight and lifestyle change. Mr. Olson will email, text, uplift, emphasize, and shoot to us all how special Haley is. He even joined the voiceover. His ways of being has unexpectedly transformed three generations of my family. Thank you, Mr. Olson. Second one is Mary Brown from Mighty Oaks Early Learning Center. Mary is always willing to do whatever needs to be done to keep our students safe. She will volunteer to go out for car or bus duty even when it's pouring rain. She always has a smile and is kind and loving to all students and staff. She's a wonderful part of our staff and has proven she will go above and beyond in whatever you ask her. I'm so happy she is someone I see every day. So do we have drawing this time?
Ginny.
Okay, all right.
Hi, I'm Ginny Amundson, President of Rochester Public School Foundation. So one of the missions of the Rochester Public School Foundation is to, is staff recognition and appreciation, and this is a wonderful way to do it. Special thanks goes to Pasquale Pizza for helping to provide a gift card for one lucky winner. So I have numbers here, and if someone... Would you like to draw a lucky number?
I've done it once before, but I'll do it. Number four.
So number four, Ellen Sassenberg from Century, and we will get a gift card to her.
3.03, 2018-2019 School Board Committee Assignment Updates. Board members, any updates that you'd like to provide? Director Marvin.
Clearly, the superintendent and I think all of the board members were honored to attend graduations during the last several weeks, some bigger and some smaller. So we saw each other out and around, especially Mr. Munoz was sort of ubiquitous. That means everywhere, so.
Thanks.
But he's a tech guy, so. But two in particular that I was able to go to. One was the ALC Graduation Alternative Learning Center, which was a wonderful way to see some kids who have struggled in a different kind of setting. Six...
It's raining.
It's kind of dramatic.
There's some potential bad weather out there, so.
Potentially.
We're good. Except we turn off the computer.
They're all going to get...
Up and running.
Thank you.
Hold that thought.
Power there, Ms. Marvin. Well, we said 5:15. No, we don't have a report here. Kathy and Julia are here.
Oh, that's true, we do have...
We have a forum.
We still got two board members we're waiting for.
We have a forum, though.
Well, yeah, but they couldn't exactly...
Reconvening at 6:17 PM. And Director Marvin, you were in the midst of sharing a committee update.
Well, it just hit me like a bolt of lightning. Anyway, the RAL graduation was wonderful, and the ALC graduation was wonderful, and both of them, I think, were really good examples of how Rochester is really leading the way in terms of having the kinds of programs that all kinds of young people need, and preparing them for life to be independent, and it just struck me at both places, how it reinforces our graduate profile, our strategic plan, to prepare kids not only academically, but also for life, so that they can become independent after they're done with their education through school district.
Thank you. Any other board... Director Seelinga?
Just to add on to Director Marvin, I did not go to any graduations this year, but I do appreciate that the district now streams the high school graduations, and I did watch at least one of those. So I think that's a great opportunity to reach our friends and family across the world. So thank you, district, for doing that.
Superintendent Munoz.
Yes, yes, I did mention this Monday morning at the government forums meeting, but I just want to publicly thank the city and the cooperation with graduations at the Civic Center, with everything that was going on downtown. I think it went fairly smoothly. You know, they had additional support out there with traffic and everything, so want to publicly thank them for partnering with us and making that day go through very smoothly.
Consent an Agenda Action Item? Does anyone want any item removed for separate consideration?
Move approval. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion hearings. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, I would like to recognize the individuals that are retiring. The first one is Martha Batzner. She's a speech and language pathologist district-wide, retirement effective at the end of the day, July 5th, 2019. She's been with the district 28 years. Carol Brom, Special Education Paraprofessional at Gage Elementary. Her retirement is effective end of the day, July 31st, 2019, 24 years. Christine Haas, Special Education Paraprofessional at John Marshall High School, retirement effective end of the day, August 20th, 2019, 19 years of service. Sharon Robinson, Special Education Paraprofessional at Lincoln K-8 Districtwide School. Her retirement is effectively end of the day, August 30th, 2019, and 22 years of service. And then the last one is Nancy Campbell, Elementary Lead at the Rochester Alternative Learning Center, retirement effective end of the day, May 31st, 2019, and she has been with the district 12 years. Would like to thank these individuals for their service to the district, and congratulations on their retirement.
Moving down our Agenda Efficient and Effective Operations, 7.01, Approval of 2019-2020 School District Budget Briefing Item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time I'm going to call John Carlson, Executive Director of Finance. This is a briefing item. Just remind the audience that the Board did have a study session last week to go into much more detail on the budget than what we're going to present today, so I'll turn it over to John.
Thank you, Chair Barlow, Superintendent Munoz, and the rest of the school board members. Today, as we're here to give the public briefing of the school district budget for the 2019-2020 school year, as mentioned, we did a study session last week, and so this is more a very high-level review of the budget for the public. So, background, school board must approve a budget by July 1st, so we're bringing it here today. You can certainly move it to action today if you want to, but you can wait till the next meeting, no problem with that. And the budget that we're presenting in the general fund complies with school board policy. So at the end of next school year, we project that we will have greater than 6% unassigned fund balance. On the revenue assumptions, within our general fund, we assume that the basic general education aid formula would go up to $6,438 per pupil unit. That was the agreement that the legislature and the governor came to at the last minute, so our budget is built on a sound base. We have worked in there that we have a voter-approved referendum of $896 per pupil unit, local optional of 424, and school board approved of 166. We did just get notice that there was a law change, and we are going to need to bring forward to you at our next school board meeting a resolution to renew that school board referendum of 16665 by June 30th, and then they are going to end up converting that, along with a little bit of the voter-approved, into local optional, so that local optional goes up to 724, and they reduce the other two categories. Eventually, basically, the school board-approved referendum will be going away. So it's just a re-titling of the categories, but doesn't mean that we'll gain or lose any revenue because of that. On the expenditure assumptions, we do not have a teachers' and principals' contract settled for the next school year, so that's going to be under negotiation in the upcoming school year. The teachers' contract is about 53% of our total general fund budget, so that's something that, you know, if we're off on our projection there by a percent, we could be off $1 million on our assumptions. So we, that's, you know, our biggest deal that's not confirmed yet, and so we'll be working on that in the summer here. Paraprofessionals also do not have a settled contract. They worked this school year without a settled contract. Our next negotiation with them is set for July 24th, so we hope we come to resolution on that one. And then all of our other groups do have settled contracts for the next school year, so we are able to budget with real people, real salaries, real benefit projections for those people. Most of our contracted services, supplies, capital expenditure budgets are either held constant, and in some cases, they were actually reduced. So we went through as a cabinet, we looked at our district-wide budgets, we saw a trend of underspending some of our budget line items, and we decided just reduce our initial budget so that we're not tying up excess funds there. As far as enhancements that are included with the next year's school district budget, we'll have nine elementary school counselor positions slated. We have five social worker positions, three student resiliency specialist positions. We are moving forward with the middle school right-fit program, similar to the elementary school right-fit program that's been operating out of Riverside. And then we have the new incubator EDU entrepreneurial program. As far as staffing for next year, as in the administration area at the top, we're pretty much the same. Teachers in that union group would be going up about 41 positions. Some of them are the ones I mentioned with the counselors and the social workers, but then there are some other positions in there as well. And in the par-union group, there'd be 11 new FTE. And then a lot of our other categories are about the same. So we'll go from about 2,573 FTE up to 2,634 budgeted FTE. So in summary, our general fund budget, which is our largest of the funds, is $232 million proposed for next year. It is a balanced budget, so the revenues are just a little bit greater than our expenditures in the budget. The unassigned fund balance, again, will comply with school board policy. There is some new revenue in there that is not included because there were some law changes right at the very end after we had done all of our budgeting, so there will be a little bit additional special education revenue that's not in there. And there's the potential for some Safe Schools revenue as well that is not included in the budget yet. We'll revise those in the fall and bring those back for your approval in the first revision. And then overall, the spending is projected to go up 3.4%. That's based on the 2% funding increase, and then our student count is going up about 1.4%. So all total, the budget is very similar to last year. It's going up mostly due to inflation and additional students.
Director Amundson.
Just to be clear for the people who are watching at home, we spoke about this at our budget study session, but an explanation of the administrators' line, which makes it look like we're adding three and a half or four administrators, but just to be really clear for those people who, you said that was a reclassification of positions.
Yes, so I will just run through that real quick. So what we're doing is we're taking two principals on special assignment, we're moving them into that administrator category, so that accounts for two of them, and then we are also asking that one of the people that we let go half-time or let reduce the position to half-time last year is actually going back up to full-time at our request, and then we are adding the middle school associate principal for the middle school right-fit program, so. And then there was one other position in there that was a reclassification from the off-schedule group into the administrator group, so point well taken that there's some shifting and juggling of positions, but at the end of the day, we're very flat in what's happening there.
Thank you.
Other questions? Director Nathan.
Well, I just want to thank you and all the staff who've worked on this. We've been getting updates about this since January, and how many versions of the budget did you go through before we got there?
This is version 11, so. And that actually was the same number of drafts we did last year. We did 11 last year as well, so.
And I also want to encourage anybody who's watching, this is what the budget book looks like. It's not that thick, but it really is the roadmap to what people can expect is happening in the district next year and how we pay for it, so thank you.
And that is available online, is that correct?
That's correct. It's within the board docs. Eventually, then, after you approve it, we'll put it out in that transparency section, so it's linked right from the main page or can be searchable. Yes, and if anyone wanted a printed copy, we'd be more than happy to provide a printed copy.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Director Carlson. 7.02, Approval of District Lead-in-Water Management Plan. Superintendent Munoz had mentioned earlier, this is not an action item, informational, just update us. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at the same, Scott Sheridan, Executive Director of Operations, and Mike Stock, Coordinator of Health and Safety, will provide this information for us tonight.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Thank you. I feel good I can come back in front of you, it's been a month or so since I had the opportunity, so what I, I'm here today with Mike Stock, our Health and Safety Coordinator, to go over our lead-in-water results. As you know, last year, Minnesota Legislature created a statute that required us to create a lead-in-water plan. Mike and others, facility staff members, did create that plan. We brought it to you on June 5th of 2018 last year, and it was approved. Now, that was a, it's a one-time deal, so it's not something that we have to re-up every single year, at least per the statute. However, because you approved that plan, we thought we'd like to know the results of what our testing has been doing. We've been doing the testing prior to 2018 as well, but I just felt it was valuable to bring it to you to let you know what our current testing schedule showed for the buildings that we tested this year, and just go over what our plan is. As you know, we test fifth beach buildings every year, so every building gets tested once every five years, and that's well within our plan that you approved last June. So this year, we, Mike, who coordinates this, works with IEA. IEA is our environmental company that we hire to conduct the testing, and they did 272 samples at six buildings, the six buildings that were on the list to get tested this year. And from all those samples that we took, only nine of them were above what our threshold that we set in our plan, which was 15 parts per billion. Now, the EPA recommends action at 20 parts per billion, but they did modify that a little bit this year. I'll let Mike explain what that modification is. But every time that we see anything over 15 parts per billion, we do take action on those particular sinks or faucets or wherever that lead source would potentially be coming from. If you want to touch on how we came up with our 2 to 15 and the type of action plans that we do?
Sure. Up until, I believe it was October, they came up with another kind of more stringent set of action levels between two parts per billion and 15, or, excuse me, 20. We have always been a little bit more stringent, went to 15, to where we took action, took that fixture out of service. So right now, we are studying anything between 2 and 15 to see what the, you know, what the possibilities of changing that fixture or taking it out of service, working with the site staff and administrators for need on that particular fixture, and then also trying to encourage our students and staff to use more filtered drinking fountains in the buildings that they, they're tested as well, but most of the time, they test low to no lead because they're filtered, so.
And so when we discovered the nine that were above the threshold, they were immediately taken out of service, and we have several remedies that we do. We determine if we even need them anymore, and if we don't, we just take them completely out. Or if we can put a line filter in that would take the lead out, we might do that, depending on what type of fixture it is. Or right now, we have some still bagged that we haven't determined what we're going to do with them yet, but they are not in use at our sites.
Just a quick question, Mike. Time of day, when are these tests usually taken or conducted? Time of day, day of week, as it may relate to flow and maximum usage?
That's a good question. So actually, that changed too in October with the recommendations. What they used to have us do is make sure the fixture was flushed within 24 hours of the sample, but they didn't want it used within the last eight hours of the sample, so they wanted to make sure that it hadn't been a stagnant fixture that just doesn't get used in your building, and now we're taking a sample. Now, the recommendation in what the testing criteria is, is that it's a first draw. So they sample it in the morning before any use. So IEA was on the ground at 6:00 AM in our buildings, taking these water samples at these fixtures. So the data, if you look back from year to year, they're a little bit different as opposed to the new sampling method, but it's giving a real time to where if you were to walk in a building and take that first drink out of the faucet, that's kind of how it went.
Thank you, appreciate it. Director Nathan.
So I know that it's in the plan, but could you just speak to how you let parents know about the lead testing and the findings?
Well, along with the board, having it on board docs, the intent is to have a method to have that out. Kind of been in communication with Heather and working with a communication piece so the parents can check on the fixtures or say to their classroom. That is another part of the recommendation by the Department of Health, too, so.
In progress.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. 7.03, Approval of 2019 Districtwide Radon Testing and Results. Informational item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Scott and Mike are going to go over the radon testing results for us.
Good evening again, board members.
Good evening.
Thank you. Thanks for entertaining me on that, by the way. As you know, Rochester Public Schools, we voluntarily test for radon in our buildings. We aren't mandated currently, statutorily, to have to do it, but we do it just because we want a safe and secure environment for our staff and students. And Mike is in charge of doing, coordinating all that as well, and we utilize the Minnesota Department of Health and the... and the United States EPA standards of four pickle curries per liter as our threshold. Now, it's the same standard that you would use in your home as well for those that have tested your homes and maybe got a radon reduction system in your home. And, but we use that same standard here in our school district. As you know, our buildings are rather large and spaced out, and they're built all across the city in all different types of soil type of situations. And so you get a lot of different potential for radon. And so the plan that we have in place for this is we test each building once every five years, similar to what we do for the lead. And IEA, that company that I described earlier, is the company that does the initial test. And then if we get any readings that are above the four pickle curries per liter, then Mike takes it even a step further, and he contacts the Minnesota Department of Health to get a 48-hour test. It's a special system that we can put in, and it rates the air quality for 48 straight hours, shows you up the highs and lows, what changes when the air handlers come on, when they're off, and all that, and for the occupied times in the building, which is the most important part. We understand that the, when our air handlers go off at 5 o'clock at night per synergistics, that the tendency is for potential, those unwanted type of gases might begin to build up. But when then, when those systems kick back on at 4:30 or 5 o'clock in the morning, it tends to draw it out. And that's what it showed in our, that 48-hour test as well. So during the occupied times, it's the critical piece to make sure that it maintains that level below the four pickle curries per liter. Did I miss anything on that one?
You did great.
All right. Thanks for the coaching on that, Mike. But we did test, I believe it was seven buildings. And two of them, Churchill and Willow Creek, required us to get that 48-hour test in there just to see what was going on. And once that system was in place at each of those buildings and we reviewed the data, we were able to mitigate it without having to spend any money with a radon mitigation system so that it remained below that four pickle curries during the occupied hours.
And I just want to ask a question so I can use the word pickle curries. But in terms of staff who may enter our buildings on the weekend, any concerns there or?
Not necessarily. The rooms that came back elevated were mainly store rooms or secondary rooms off of classrooms, although they still came back high, so we still looked into them and tested them. But even that, they showed our systems worked, per se. But also, if, if there's activities in our buildings, then the buildings are set to turn on and the systems are to turn on, rather than just a random staff member showing up on a Saturday, we wouldn't know that. But in these particular cases, there shouldn't be an issue of that. I would, I would think over a long period of time, you know, a week or so, then our systems are set to run.
Thank you very much. 7.04, acceptance of bids for the Bishop Elementary dehumidification project. Briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Scott will brief us on this, and joined by Bill Burt, Coordinator of Construction Services, and Jason Woodhouse from CDW. I just kind of want to set this up a little bit. We spent a lot of time researching this, and you know that Bishop is one of the buildings that potentially would have a new school in three years. But we felt, especially based on the last two years, the issues that we were dealing with there, that we couldn't ask the staff and students of that school to wait three years until the new school was built. So we asked to look at all the different options that, that it could address it during this next three years. And the recommendation we're bringing to you tonight is, is the cheapest of all the different options we looked into. And I know there's the potential concern about putting money into a school that you're eventually going to tear down when you rebuild a new school, but we felt that we had to do something to address it for the next three years. And like I said, this is the cheapest we could come up with to address the issue. And the bids had come in a little bit higher than we anticipated, but with all the stuff that's going on in our area and the fact that we're, we needed to get the parts here rather quickly so we can get it installed yet this, this school year. For example, we're not able to have summer school in Bishop because it's, it's just way too hot and humid in there. So those students have to go to Elton Hills for summer school because their facility's not available. And I do know, Board members for the last couple of years, received some feedback from parents about how the temperatures in there beginning of the school year or the end of the school year. So what we're going to present to you tonight is, is what we believe is the, the best option that we have to, to address the issue for the next three years. So I'll turn it over to Scott.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening again, Board members.
Good evening.
The, this is a really difficult decision, and this is why we're bringing it to you, Board members, to make the decision. And with Superintendent, to reiterate what he said, that it's, we're in kind of a tough spot here. However, a little background, back in 2008, there was an indoor air quality project scheduled for Bishop. And it was partially completed. It was a $2.8 million project. And within the original design of that project back in '08 was the dehumidification project. But that project was cut from that project. The project, that piece of it was cut from the project back in 2008, so it was not completed. We had Bishop on our 10-year plan that you approved in June of 2017 to do an indoor air quality project. We estimated that project to be about $5.5 million, and our plan was to complete it in 2019. In March of 2018, CRW Architects, who Jason works for, was hired to design the overall project. And then in November of 2018, you approved the general obligation bonds for Bamber Valley Project and also Bishop among some other projects. That was about $25.5 million. We continued moving along with the full design of the project. And in June of 2018, when the task force was formed to look at capacity issues, through their work, they determined around March of 2019 that one of the best options would be Bishop, that you're familiar with, where we build a new building on the Bishop site and then deconstruct the old building. So that put us into a bit of a tailspin trying to decide what to do, as the Superintendent was saying. So we had CRW Architects, Jason in particular, look at other ways that we could temporarily install a dehumidification system into the building in order to alleviate the concerns that had been expressed by the staff and students and the parents of that building. And like the Superintendent said, the building's offline during the summer because you just can't use it because it's so hot. Yet it's a great neighborhood out there and country club manner. It's kind of a standalone area, a lot of walkability. Yet now we're busing them all the way to Elton Hills for summer school. And just as a case in point, I was out at Bishop last Friday on the last school day. It was 88 degrees outside, it was about that inside the building. Luckily, it was kind of more of a non-instructional day, you know, with the popsicles and everything, but the popsicles didn't last very long inside the building because it was really, really warm. And it's a consistent theme. It's been that way since I've been here with a consistent theme. So Jason looked at, like I, like I stated, three different options to find out what's the most viable one. One would be to put DX cooling units on the roof of the building, plug them into the normal systems. The benefit to doing that was the potential of the reuse of those DX cooling units, these mechanical units that help to dehumidify the building. We could take those out and use them at other buildings that currently have DX units if those systems start failing. Now, that's potential, that's not a guarantee that we could do that. And those mechanical pieces in that portion of the project, those DX units are about $100,000 of the project. Another option that Jason looked at was the putting window air, in simplistic terms, put window airs in each of the classrooms. There's 22 classrooms. It would require probably two window airs in each classroom. You'd have to run power to each of those. You'd have to have ventilation systems, and they'd be loud. And it, we determined that probably wasn't the best system. It was actually estimated to be more than what the first option was. Then the third option was a hybrid system with the DX units, not necessarily put up in the roof, but they're installed in the rooms. And correct me if I'm wrong with that, but they're installed individually in the rooms, requires some ducting, and they would ventilate outside. And the, the release of the, the fluids would go right down into the ground outside. It'd require all the electrical enhancements as well, again. So we came up with the, the first option. And as you know, we pushed to get a timeline out there. It went out for bid. We only got one bid back, and that was from Knutson Construction for $525,000. Our initial estimate that Jason thought it could have been was about $335,000 to $340,000 to complete. But like the Superintendent said, I mean, we're in crunch time here. A lot of mitigating factors are raising that price because of the labor that's going to be required to get it done in a timely manner prior to the start of school. So it's a tough decision, I understand that, and that's why you're on the board. And we're bringing it forward. We're here for the safety and the welfare of our staff and students, and we just wanted to do our due diligence to present you this option and let you make the determination. And if I missed anything or forgot anything, feel free to, oh, thank you.
Director Schulzner.
So you mentioned this was potentially part of a project in 2008, but because of budget concerns, it was cut. Has this school ever had air conditioning?
No. It does have a little bit of air conditioning in the office area and the media center. So two small sections.
So really, a request to add something to a building, we want gone in three years.
I'm sorry, I missed the question.
So the request is really to add something to a building that it's never had, that's hopefully going to be gone in three years.
Correct.
Director Marvin.
Yeah, and as much as I don't like that idea, when you're a little kid or when you're a staff working with little kids and you have three or five or 10 weeks of unbelievable heat, it's miserable. I mean, learning just doesn't happen. I wish there was some other alternative, but it, it's almost inhumane to ask the kids and the staff to continue working under those circumstances.
And before I pass to Director Adamson, so, and I'm glad that, Director Marvin just mentioned that. So is it fair to say that the learning environment is impacted? Well, let me rephrase that. Is the learning environment impacted based on environmental? Based on environmental?
Environment.
Environment, I didn't want to say that, but it didn't sound right.
I'm not an expert in the classroom portion of it, but I have walked through Bishop, for instance, last spring when they had multiple fans blowing everything off the walls and the power suction going down the halls and the roar of the, the fans. And I can't, in my mind, see how that wouldn't affect the ability to learn because, and then just the heat itself of that's in that building. I mean, that southern exposure, it has a southern exposure on for 11 of the classrooms, which would take direct sunlight. There are a few trees along that south side, but a lot of the, like I said, there are 11 classrooms. The office happens to be on the north side, and it happens to have air conditioning, but the rest of the classrooms do not.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I'll give an example, maybe not directly connected to instruction, but we were a little toasty in the conference room today during cabinet, and you all have been in there a few times, and we were in there for several hours. And I mean, we got work done, but it was, it was difficult to get beyond that and just do the work that we need to do. I mean, we had my door open, and it, it was just a challenge.
Director Adamson, Workman, and then Schulzner.
So you said the potential is there to resell the units, but it's not a guarantee. What kinds of factors would be affecting whether or not they could be resold and then, or reused, sorry? And then, and then if they couldn't be reused, could they be sold to someplace else who could use them?
I will let Bill or Jason, if you're okay answering that. But just as a preface to that, not all our buildings utilize DX cooling. Most of them use the chiller system, or some of them use ice systems. There's relatively few of our buildings that use the DX cooling. This happens to be one of the buildings that does. But as far as the viability of selling or reusing?
Yeah, it all depends on the mechanical system at the building, if it matches up with the size of what these would be. So like Scott said, there's probably other commercial buildings out there that these could work for. It's hard to say how potentially you could resell them, but cost-wise, I don't know what you'd get back versus what you put in. But probably in the new schools, you're going to have a different mechanical system that's more efficient and more of a central plant like your schools have.
Yeah, I, may I ask a couple of questions, or should I try and remember? Okay. So you mentioned that the Bishop office and the media center are currently air-conditioned? Are those, do those air conditioners, do they take 110 outlets then? Are they 220 or?
They're, they're part of the rooftop units that serve those spaces.
Okay, so they're not like the window units?
No.
So do window, I, I mean, I suppose, what would you do? Go to a big box store and buy big window units then for those, those classrooms? And wouldn't, I mean, if a homeowner were to buy big air conditioners like that that weren't central air, or a number of them, would they have to be rewiring their electrical for, you know, different amperage? Different, you know, 220 instead of 110? Do they, in other words, do they plug, can they plug into the wall? I mean, I'm, I'm interested in, in what factors would have to, what fact, what's required to actually have those be used in a classroom that's different from a normal?
Just the amount of units you get into. If you have two to three per classroom, and you multiply that by however many classrooms, you end up increasing electrical load on the building, which requires that be upgraded. As well as you have to modify all the window systems to accept those units. So there's work with that. And then, as Scott mentioned too, the noise of those units are, are always the best. And I think what you'd get out of those units as far as cool air versus that central system through the rooftop isn't unequal either.
And then, may I ask one more question? So aside from being uncomfortable, are there any adverse health effects that we know about?
That's an interesting question. When you have a building that's enclosed with a high humidity for extended periods of time, if Mike Stock was here, he would tell you that the potential for mold growth or the breakdown of the materials inside the structure of the building is, is higher than it would be if that was, if the environment of that building was maintained at the proper level. And that's my uninformed personal opinion, but we have a couple of experts here that might support that.
Yeah, I was like, expressed concern about that.
So have, have, has any of that ever been identified at Bishop? Since, since we've not had air cooling before?
Not, not to my knowledge, no.
Okay, so it's a possibility, but not, not that we know.
Correct.
Director Schulzner, then Director Nathan.
So Director Marvin's point is the, the summer months wouldn't have the potential for summer school there, which are the hot unbearable months. What are the costs, and you may or may not know, of the busing of the students? You know, if we didn't have to bus the students, any guess of what the operational savings and no transportation would be?
Well, I know that for routing, it's about $340 a day. And I, I think actually Jeff Cappers and I discussed this, and I think we came up with about $15,000 for the summer school schedule, which is about 15 days. Because I think he said about three routes. So that would be about $1,000, 15 days, $15,000.
So would the routes still exist if they're going to Eric Bishop?
No.
They would just walk?
They would walk, yeah.
Yeah, summer school, we don't normally provide transportation, but we do because they can't go to their neighborhood school.
Correct.
Director Nathan.
So if we installed it this summer, ready for the beginning of the school year, would we get three school years? Being optimistic about the referendum, would we get three school years of use out of them before the new school was constructed? So that's a cost, if I'm doing my math right, about $175,000 a year to provide this upgrade to the environment for Bishop? upgrade to the environment for Bishop.
Yeah, it'd be the 525 divided by three.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Director Seelinger.
So I have been at Bishop in the first week of school in the gym. And as Scott walked by me, I said, oh my gosh, what is going on in this building? It was horrible. And I was just there for a few hours. So my personal experience. Do you know, because I know that you have tried to mitigate, mitigate this as best you could with the fans and such, do you have a ballpark cost of what that's cost us per year to get the fans in there running down the hallway and in the gym and probably, I'm sure there's at least one fan or not, if not more in every classroom? I know it's not going to be $525,000, but?
No. I, I don't know if I could even venture to say roughly on that one. There's a lot of fans, although you're absolutely correct.
There's a lot, I guess, if I may, just my point is, we're, we're using, we're already having to use resources to solve, to come up with a solution. And it's not even a very good solution, in my humble opinion. And I, I, I do understand our, our difficulty making a decision on this, knowing that this building may or may not come offline in three years. And we all know, and as Superintendent said, working in heat, you know, is difficult. And perhaps that's because we live sort of privileged lives and like to be in air conditioning and cool. But, you know, I guess I would posit the opposite. If this was a building that was not warm enough in the winter, we probably would not blink about saying we have to adjust the temperature for our staff and students' safety, learning and comfort. So I thank you for doing your due diligence. I'm looking at all the options and I'm, I'm sorry you didn't, we, there was not a, a magic solution for this, but.
Director Atmanson.
For those who may be listening at home, the explanation of funding coming out of long-term facility maintenance can't then be used for another teacher. So somebody can't say, I'd rather have a smaller class size because yes, this is a different funding source?
Absolutely correct. It comes out of one silo and it can only be used for certain things to take care of our buildings as far as, not repairs necessarily, but the deterioration of our buildings to, to fix that.
And are there monies presently available on that one funding source?
Yes.
Okay. Director Schulzner.
Is this the last elementary school in the district to not have air conditioning?
Bamber and Bishop, yes. And Bamber's being completed right now, yes.
Any additional questions?
Here's.
Director Orpind.
So I, I really want to be positive about the referendum, but supposing it doesn't pass, would any of the other indoor air quality pieces of this be able to be done later that we're not doing now?
Absolutely. It's already designed. I'm sure Jason would have to update his design, but once, if we decide that we, that's the plan, that we're going to move forward to complete the project, then we, we already have the funds available to, to put the new flooring in and the new doors, the plumbing, all that, that is not being done with this current project.
So that's a good point that she's bringing up that, I mean, we're all confident that we won't have to deal with that, but let's say we're not going to rebuild Bishop. By adding this piece, it's part of the, the plan that we had a year ago. So it's not like, oh, now we have to throw that out and do something totally different. It's, it's part of the piece of the plan that we have.
Correct, it's a permanent solution for that project, so.
Unlike window airs would be.
Any new inquiries?
So, yeah, just a, just a follow-up. So I guess what I was getting at is there isn't, there isn't a critical order that things have to be done in for this project. Like, once you have this, the coolers installed, then you can still do the rest of the project without undoing everything you've already done? Is that, do I have that right?
Correct.
Okay.
And it's safe to say that that's how you conduct business. You always do things in an orderly, planned fashion and never end up having to have to redo or tear something out that you just installed.
Well, I, I think, I think my point was if, you know, if you have, you do this first and you do this second and this third, and say this piece was third in line, and if it was dependent on one and two being done, or if one and two couldn't be done because number three was already done, that's kind of what I was getting at. So it is, it is a more of a standalone piece of it that we wouldn't incur necessarily a huge additional expense to complete the project if we need to.
Correct.
Correct. We want to be stewards of the taxpayer money and that's our primary goal every time we look at these projects. But we're not going to just abandon Bishop for the next three years either. If they need a painting for some reason or if the flooring is failing, we're going to repair the flooring because it's for the students and staff, that's who our customers are.
Director Marvin.
If you were going to get this done, when would you have to start the work? If you're going to get it done by next fall?
Tomorrow.
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
Soon as possible.
Well, I, I see in the timeline that you're looking to get the shop drawings done by the 14th, so should the board be inclined, would you be interested in us moving this to action tonight?
If that's your inclination, that would be highly appropriate, yes.
Understatement.
I know. I guess my, my first feeling about this was, gosh, that's a half a million dollars that we might not have to spend. But on further consideration, we had already approved a huge part of the pro, or the project already. So it's not like we're doing the entire five point, was it 5.5 million project dollar amount? You know, we're only doing a piece of that so that our students and our staff can have a better learning and working environment, okay?
Yes.
Well, that then raises the question, if we have previously approved this, then what action then are you asking of us tonight?
This is the bid.
Oh, the bid.
The bid. Okay. A portion of the project, yeah.
Yeah.
Move to action, second.
Any discussion? All in favor of movement to action, please sign five and say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approves the bid from Knutson Construction in the amount of $525,000 for the, for the dehumidification project for Bishop Elementary School.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion.
I have one more. I, I think it's a really good point, especially the last one that Director Orpind pointed out, that this isn't necessarily a half million dollar project, it's a four and a half million dollar reduced project. Very different perspective when you look at it that way.
It's an excellent point, yes.
So we're basically approving a reduction of four and a half million dollars here.
That was good.
Any additional questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So I'll leave it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
7.05, closed session, property, action item.
Pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D.05 subdivision 3, I make a motion to move into closed session to discuss potential real estate transactions.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved, closed session at 7:04 PM. Meeting's reconvened at 7:41.
Mr. Chair, I move to amend the agenda to add the following item. Approval of first addendum to the purchase agreement for the purchase of land to construct a future school.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, just like to, for the audience or the public, that this is just giving us another 60 days and the rationale for that is to wait for the results of our traffic study and we'll provide a little more information for us about the potential infrastructure that we would have to do around the site. So once we get those results, we can better make a decision.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the first addendum to the purchase agreement with JRF's LLC.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned at 7:42 PM.